Okay, welcome, Merrimack. This is the Merrimack Board of Commissioners meeting on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is five oh seven. Public. Sorry. You can participate in the webinar. You can, you may join us on the webinar about the website. Or you can be calling in at six four six eight seven six nine nine two three. And it's courtesy and DVD, Merrimack TV is also recording the meeting to be posted on their website at a later date. First, we're gonna do is stand for the Puzzles.
Puzzles. To the flag. States, America. Public, which stands one nation, I'm gonna God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Today, we have four commissioners. Here today, we have Aaron Wolf, John and I. Don is on not be able to make it today. He is excused for not being here today. First thing we're gonna start off with is the finance and human resource review by Kristen. How you doing today?
Doing well on yourself?
Good, thank you.
So financial report for. Year end, we are for FY twenty-three. We are still waiting on a couple. Adjustments from the auditors. The audit did go very well. We are probably looking at a single audit. For two, three, seven, and eight. Particularly for the grants that we received from that is considered federal. For the three million dollars. It is a very unique situation because that three million actually paid for invoices there to get a single audit on. They said they have to by law, do it again. But it should be very. Quick because they're. Basically, they've already reviewed all these invoices already. So why don't you be hearing from Brian? Later this week. Not only to get my adjustments for year end, so you should have more final numbers next meeting. Along with when he needs to come in to do that single audit. As far as August, we're only in month two. For FY twenty-four, there are a few things I wanted to kind of point out. I know that you guys do keep your eyes on overtime. For field tax. It is running a little higher than normal. We had two projects, one on Milford Road, one on Crater Road. They were both done after hours, just due to the project that they had, they had to do the back hours. That account is five zero two zero two. Account seven zero zero four zero point two. We have started replacing some larger meters at industrial sites. Which. In our. Meter exchange program. They weren't really factored in. It was more of the consumer five ace meters that we were in exchange, but these were also needed to be exchanged too, so it's slightly higher. Account seven zero two five zero are an entrance. We did have to pay for our customers, excuse me, partial of their driveway. Due to some tearing up when we were installing the entrance for that particular. We came to a settlement. That. What was our portion? Of what we actually did, that's what we paid instead of the whole thing. Questions on any of that or the audits or?
I have a question on the audit. I think two meetings ago, we had talked about the financial liaison.
Yes.
Yeah, Chris and I have been emailing back and forth.
So you were involved in that?
Um, yes, we're gonna sit down and go through stuff.
When I get my final numbers, we're gonna go through the whole audit project. The numbers, the reports they get so that we're only, will she be? In on account numbers, familiarize her with that and make, when we start doing the budgets, make a lot more sense to it.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Trust funds. I have added a few. Items. That based on Underwood's one. Have started finishing up the capital improvements plan, so I added a few things in all of our conversations.
Something we should be looking at?
This one. At the end of the financials.
Okay.
A little bit further.
That sounds.
Founded?
That's for the funds, right? Oh, that one, okay.
Remember for profit and loss.
My bad.
Capital reserves.
Our capital reserve balance.
Okay.
Kind of interchangeable. We had. You know about? A few things. I've added on. Some of the. You know, key projects potentially to come from capital returns. And. The penalty check contract continued on from the water purchase, but again, as with FY twenty-three, we need to. Because we did well, but just to keep it there as kind of a placeholder. So that brings us down to four point eight million. After these purchases. In pink at the bottom, I made some suggestions for your warrant articles for the March meeting. Particularly eight hundred thousand for equipment and facilities. The ninety-nine thousand is a set fee based on last year's system development amount that we collected. And then two hundred thousand back into water purchase, throwing up. Again, suggestions.
And that eight hundred thousand is. Anticipate from anticipated revenues.
Correct, so they're from the.
Unexpected. Budget.
Correct, unreserved funds based on how we did last year.
So is the whole one point six or just the eight hundred thousand from those?
All of it, all of it. The eight hundred thousand and the two hundred thousand, the ninety-nine thousand is actually our entrance fees. That the amount from the previous year is voted to then get moved into that particular trust fund.
To be consumed later.
So this is money that we already have. We just need to move it by the, after the close of the year, because we don't lose it.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the ninety-nine thousand is not the other two.
The other two, it's, it's not. It's not a kind of lose it since we don't set any tax.
Right.
It's a matter of assigning it.
Signing it somewhere.
To go somewhere specific. Questions on those?
Good. Total. In reserves then. Prior to those transactions is four point eight, right? Million?
Prior to our warrant articles, after all of those purchases, which we have not done. Many of them. Would be the four point eight.
It might be a good idea to put like the percentage to the annual budget here also on that sheet. Because that's something that we're talking about frequently when we talk about increasing or not increasing. The reserve funds. Right? And then you can maybe even put next to that percentage, the actual, next to the actual percentage that we just talked about, maybe put that reference percentage. That you keep bringing up from staff in terms of, right, yeah, well. Now, what you guys are referring to frequently is that municipalities should. Consider a certain percentage of their annual budget to be.
Yes, that.
Which I forgot what the exact. Percentage is and which is why I'm asking to put it on here, so we have this in front of us all the time.
So overall budget. Including all the assigned things like.
Correct.
Okay, I can do that.
Just so we have a reference, this is where we are currently, this is where we are after the warrant articles, may or may not pass.
Right.
And this is where we should be based on good practice of municipalities.
Exactly.
Makes sense?
Yes.
Because then you don't have to repeat yourself and we don't have to keep remembering, which is exactly how I like it.
Oh. Next item, fund balance. Gets into our. Assigning of things out of the unsigned or unrestricted.
Is that? So this page, correct?
Fund balance.
In the package, I meant. Because these don't go in order.
Right before the one we were just looking at.
Yeah, I think we're a little bit out of order.
Do we put these in the order that we're reading them in, so we're not digging?
Sorry about that.
All right. It's called the fund balance?
Same Merrimack.
There it is.
So again, we're two months in. And. Year-end adjustments for FY twenty-three and the this current year. Are not in there. Our unrestricted, as of now, is twenty-three million. We have restricted. The inventory. The system development from the previous year, which would be part of your warrant article for March. Encumbered purchase orders, which are purchases. That we have the contracts by the end of the year, but the actual item did not finish before the end of the year. And then our new fund balance reserve, which is the thirty-three percent. Of this current budget. Which is the one point nine. That leaves us right now at roughly four hundred thousand in net income. For all accounts, not just budgeted ones. Questions there? Level of service. Level of service project. Those are mine, most of you. Update, Aaron. Was a part of an asset agreement that we got. Um. Um, yes. It was to, one. Get all of our assets. On, uh, listed. To the vertical and horizontal. And get them into an asset management system, which Underwood helped us with. Part of that grant agreement was to come up with a level of service. Which basically means now that you know about all your assets, how do you plan on managing them? And. Not only. Did they want to go over physical assets, but they also wanted to move over all assets, our customers. Our employees, just basically anything that could be an asset, what's your plan on now leaving company? All this information that we gathered for you. Primarily in terms of preventative maintenance and so forth. So they kind of gave you a, gave us a. Outline to work with. And then to kind of specify it to your, to the company that you're in. Coming up with high-level look of goals and then a low-level look of what are we actually gonna do? So the first part that I had given you. Was the high-level look, level of service project. They suggested to relook at emission statement. Which we revamped a little bit. Including a more of. Not just drinking water, but that we also do fire protection, including our hydrants, which a lot of our customers forget that we are part of too. To look at our vision and there was lots of debate on mission statement and vision and what was the difference? But there, there is a slight difference and then the high-level goals. They gave asset prevention and condition, conservation compliance, health, safety and security, service quality and cost. And then come up with measurable ways of achieving those goals. And then they had a spreadsheet, which is. The third part of that. Brian, the operations manager and I kind of got into, how do we plan on? Achieving these goals that we just alerted DES about our, our assets. And right now we are, we have imported. Our horizontal. Inventory into our asset management known as elements. And. Brian is working with both. Foremen to come up with specific tasks so that they are doing high levels, low levels, every day, preventative maintenance on all these. Throughout our. In terms of customers. As an asset. Getting more knowledge out to them. Talking to them about our portal, being able to use that portal for information. Our Facebook, getting things out there in terms of employees updating our policies. Some of them have been updated for twenty years, making sure that they're as valid as they need to be. So those are kind of where we stand with the goals we came up with. And how we're trying to implement them throughout our normal everyday work. Does that make sense? Okay. Questions and? On any of that, and I will. That you wanted to keep, keep updated. One of our action items is the employee handbook.
I was.
So that is. Those are the flow, slow pieces that we're kind of working on in terms of what I'm doing. And then I'll keep you updated with where Brian is getting our. Preventive maintenance tasks.
So currently we, the, you don't have a handbook for the employees?
There is, and making sure that the policies are valid.
Okay, like updated.
Some of them are just old. So making sure they are as. With our change of world as valid as they need to be.
So I'm missing one thing here that we talked about before and that was listed here before, and that is the employee suggestion. Box and employee feedback.
Have you done a survey?
Yeah, is that still on there? I don't see it.
Some of the last paragraph in the middle. On this one. On the third page.
Employee customer survey.
Employee survey.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't see it in the summary. That's why I was surprised. Okay, if it's, as long as it's not falling through the cracks, that's fine.
So as we run these, I want you updated.
Both of you good with level of service overview?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so. Looking at.
There was, I'm sorry to jump back, there was one thing and I think we created an actual item of that and that was like the. Some kind of a Fourth Amendment auditor policy or training. Remember that? We talked about that two meetings ago, actually based on an article that Carrie wrote in the municipal.
Oh, the article we read?
I sent it around everybody to, to read.
Okay.
In the same training article.
I'm not sure if the article was, you know. I don't know, might be something to, to also think about of some kind of. You know. Strategic approach there because the last thing is we need some kind of press about that. Right? So I don't know if that might fit into the whole level of service thing because it's part of employee training and focus thing. But I don't remember that article being. Really covering how to respond to it, did it?
It did.
It did, okay.
It's basically respond exactly the way you would.
Really? Yeah, okay.
Your initial.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And find the person that can best do that with a straight face.
That wouldn't be me. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. We're all set, the finance and resources review, so the next item is Board of Commissioners to hear an update on the open house at Wells two and nine. Scheduled for September thirtieth.
Basically, the schedule for September number is for September thirtieth, February three. Well, before. We advertised. The open house, we sent out an email blast, posted on our Facebook page. Also on the front door, town hall, library, post office. Down on our sign. And Merrimack TV as well. Thank you, I forgot that actually, put a sign on the gate. Actually. Human dying to the neighborhood space as well. For food, we're kind of, kind of thinking of pizza at this point. We're writing some pizzas and. There was a lot of people that showed up, we kind of could.
Gate as we go and not like.
Call.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I was hoping for Dave's steak tips and chicken then.
Well, we, we're looking at food trucks and it's just.
It's costly.
Sorry, expensive.
Yeah.
Well, they had minimums too.
Yes, yeah.
That's about it on that so far.
Have you guys gotten any? Feedback from public or anything?
And.
Postpones? I thought it was last Saturday.
No, no, September thirtieth, September thirty.
He talked about another date that I didn't, it's at the Bowls too quick.
Okay.
So the. Guys are all set with the. So the Board of Commissioners to hear an update on the sodium chloride reduction project.
All right, so um. The, uh. Hampshire DOT letter went out on the twenty ninth, October twenty-ninth. How many, Paul McCallum was CC'd on that as well. That letter that he copied the town council, we forward that to the state reps. Maureen Mooney has set up a Zoom meeting with. Dave Rodriguez. Hampshire DOT Assistant Commissioner for tomorrow at eleven. I think he actually touched base with him today, he actually gave me a call. Talk for a little bit, seemed to. Express an interest in working with us to reduce salt load in the aquifer. Jamie, Jill and I will be on the Zoom call. With the other state reps and. Our council. Members and Paul. As well as. David Rodriguez. Rodriguez, I can't hit. But a hard time with that. So we'll be on that call as well. He actually just got back. For vacation.
Stayed back, so being in Greece and Italy, so getting caught up and he's gonna call us tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Answered that, our email while he was there.
Oh, wow.
So. Guess a lot of it did work, it did stir some things up, so.
Any questions, guys? All right, next thing is a Board of Commissioners review in the minutes from July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting. Thank you. Aaron and I were at the meeting, Don is not here today, so I don't know if you want to table the minutes for Don to be here to vote on them?
Probably could.
Okay.
There's. Off of the July seventeenth minutes. Aaron and Ken. There's three of you. Do you want to table them with the gods?
He tends to have common soil.
We can do that sometime.
He does usually.
I'm sure.
I mean, I have no problem voting on the minutes, but I mean, but also. But I mean, I do know Don usually does a lot of it, but.
The minutes changes to you already.
I think he already saw these.
Okay, 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 so, all right.
Yeah, I think he already saw these ones, because we saw them.
Yeah, the first time they were abbreviated though, because.
Yes, because Amanda wasn't there that time.
Right.
Yes.
So she put those out for the, just the compliance, this is the full law version.
Okay.
Amanda, when did you get these over to me?
Thursday.
Okay, definitely not, he's not there. So, thanks, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Do you want to table them where he has the table?
I, just knowing how he, he does like to put input. I think it's a, be a good idea to table the minutes. You guys agree? So that also would be table the, the minutes for. Well.
Those did change for the public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing. You guys want to vote on that one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I was present for that one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the public meeting or public hearing meeting minutes from July seventeenth.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I'm standing. Okay. And for the August twenty-first minutes. Probably do the same thing, we'll table these where Don was present at that meeting also.
Did go well.
These, okay.
These one out, Don had comments on this one, the, the July ones.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll vote on these ones then, on this, on the twenty-first. Wolf was absent, so John, Aaron and I can vote on this one. On the August twenty-first.
Okay.
You're going to win it.
I'll be commissioned to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, and all in, so we'll go to a vote and all in favor. Saying aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
August twenty-first minutes are. And then. Then also, it was non-public minutes for August twenty-first also. That they, okay, so well. John and Aaron and I were at this meeting too. Do I have a motion to accept the non-public minutes for August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three?
I'm of motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll. I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll sustain, so I'm gonna abstain again.
All right.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah, because I wasn't there, right, for that one.
Correct, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was. I was quite sure if I was here, so I figured I'm gonna talk to myself.
So next on the agenda is the Board of Commissioners to review action items from previous meetings. Go through these, try to go through these pretty quick. Action on number two. Reminded greatest summary table of understanding ESRs from Underwood and Emery and Garrett. And looking at that's supposed to be updated in November's meeting, is that correct?
I think we only have those two that are following in September.
Okay, so we just.
See that right?
Okay, so we can just go right to those two. All right. So the next one actually is action on number twenty-three. Reminded to share the results which additional PFAS sampling points were added to the system and the results.
Yes, the base off on this. We sampled in July, but they were in the August packet. We don't sample again until October. We get them back before the October meeting. It might be in the packet, but it's going to be October slash November.
Okay, so should we just move to move it to November to be safe?
Any. Amanda can just put October slash November.
Okay. Alright. Here, okay. Sorry, so then number fifty eight. Number fifty, Ron Meyer to reach out to January Emery for update. And information on the mineral grass, which was quarterly. Any update on that?
Sampling now to get it. It's fall in October.
October?
Yeah.
So that should be in October's.
November then, right, because we need the results.
Yeah, so we. Say November, be safe. Okay. And then what's?
He wants obviously back to forty for a minute.
Sure, NBD open house at the treatment plant, yeah.
We need that on here. Still, can we remove that?
I think we can go ahead.
I'm good for moving it since we have a date set.
Yeah.
And it's in motion. So Amanda, we can remove number forty, NBD open house at the treatment plant.
Alright, sounds good.
We're going to set day. And skipping down, let's see here. So eighty four to eighty seven, eighty four, update the website for removing old photos, information and adding new ones.
That was done.
Oh, really cool. Was that actually?
Sure why we still had it on here?
Okay, so we move, take that one off. Amanda, can we remove number eighty four?
Eighty four, yep, um. I'm sorry, can we jump back for a minute? To. I guess I missed sixty seven through eighty four.
Uh, we're.
Updates.
Yeah. Oh yeah.
Actually, we can notice seventy nine.
You want to do this like sixty seven, you know, T if you don't come up, we're still working on that sixty. We're still working on that.
Yeah, yeah, sixty seven, a little more tomorrow.
Okay.
Sixteen still working on. November, it's for seventy six, seventy nine.
Amanda, can you put the November date for seventy six over in? The date mark, just.
I was just gonna say it might be a good idea to always have an up. Maybe we want to change that last column date mark complete and make a change, make a change that to next update. And then put a date in every single item here, so we don't have to confusion every time. Does it make sense for everybody?
Yeah, I mean, especially if we complete, we're going to remove it from.
Right, because nobody really cares about date mark complete, but by the time it's complete, it's going to drop off. So we're better off with that column saying. Next update pending, or you know, next update on, right?
I'll keep the date mark complete column and just hide it, but that. Will give people the date of the meeting so they want to go back and double check what was said about it. They can go back and make sure that it was closed and why it was closed.
So sixty seven through. Seventy nine or should it just be my dog going?
Well, I mean, if they're ongoing, the question is, does it mean that we get a monthly update or not? If so. Then it should say monthly, right? Ongoing is not really clear. Do we need an update right now or is there nothing to report, right? So. That's why we have some of these saying up, report to be given September, report to be given October. So maybe to not drag out this meeting, what I'll do is. I'll rework that sheet and send a proposal to to the board. About dates. So we don't have to go with item by item. So okay for everybody?
Yeah, sounds good.
But. The ongoing items that I know the salt mitigation here, item forty three, right, says ongoing. That's why I'm saying we need dates here because. Otherwise it's confusing. Are we need to, we need to talk about it or not? The doodle ball for the fall meeting, for example, was that done?
No, can you just go back?
Okay. So. Forty three would be ongoing, but we're talking to talk about it in October, right?
Yeah.
Report to begin October. Our next update, October.
Yeah, because they're meeting tomorrow. So that means we're up to eighty two? Is that correct?
Yes, sorry.
No worries. So.
Actually.
Oh, sad.
Yeah.
I do have, it's a quick. August thirty first, we get a sidewalk. I get a sidewalk with Underwood. And. For each location and. Hopefully a. On America was there as well, looking at probably like a spring install. Should get the plans. Done soon. I can. Review those and get them back on something bid for a spring.
So then eighty two pursuit column test development at Wells four and five.
That is complete.
And it's complete, so we can move it off the.
That is complete.
Yeah, they're up. Actually, they were done last.
Right, but weren't we talking, you were reaching out to vendors to try to get samples of stuff to put in them?
I think there's a separate.
That's. Separate, so do you want to change the wording on that?
I was starting the one.
I was reading it as.
The right, the columns are done.
Yes. So with that being said, I did talk to Pete. And again, there is contingency in the project. With the board, does board want us to have the. The same design. Seven and eight. Two and nine, I can get those. I'll have the actual. Project to the built, this one works, start working on. I'll get a quote obviously, but. Get those built at the other two locations as well.
What you're proposing is adding the same. Same column testing to each plant, so we can change each change either water sources, water individually.
Makes sense because you're going to want to do a column test for each source anyways.
Can we feed? The well water separately from each well to these columns, or is it the mix of the two for each plant?
Say there is a location. On at each plant. So yes, we could. Send a water line from the raw water, send it over to. These column tests. So there is an area designed for it in each building.
So we could. Right now, we could only sample water from well four. Not the mixed water from well four and five.
Four and five, it is.
It's already mixed at that point when it reaches the the test columns.
Believe it, yes, it comes off of the. Where it. Joins together. It's not just four, it's not just.
Be whatever wells running. Would be going through the test column.
Yes.
So if we want to run four just through the test column, we just have to run well four. If we wanted to run five through the test column, we just have to run five.
You know, let me verify on that because I I don't know if there's like a mixing valve type thing on the two.
After, yeah.
So you, because it would make sense if you want to run just one. Force you could, but let me, let me verify that. I'm not a hundred percent on here.
Then maybe let's change that, Amanda, eighty two. Maybe let's add clarify whether individual well water. Can be run to the test columns or only mixed.
Water, or I could look to see where it. I I believe. It's already combined, but I. I can't swear to that right now.
If you're. If you were thinking about doing columns at the rest of the plants, would you want as many columns? At all the plants? So that you basically be doing the same test at all three plants at the same time, kind of thing?
I'm thinking of the same design and yeah.
Yeah, and we. Keeping the same sign, so. It's like a nature.
Right.
So is this something that happens over time, what it goes through this, or is there a specific volume that you're putting through? In other words, you couldn't take water from seven and eight, drive it over to four and five and throw it through the columns?
No, it would be a constant.
Got it.
Yeah, there's meters.
How much is that ups cost?
Seems like twenty three thousand dollars to have this, the six columns. I guess the material was pretty expensive.
Okay, but it gives us an idea of which media has worked best. Alright, I mean.
Going to make a big change.
Really add up, find something. Sure. I'd be in favor of it.
Would you say we have three hundred thousand?
Did it say?
Yeah, I think when I talked to Pete about it, I want to do a bit more, but yeah.
Yeah. I think it's definitely worth doing because if we're going to put the money in and change media, that's a huge amount of money and commitment.
Yeah. And we have been taking. Getting a five gallon pail of media as it comes in as well off. Change out. We will have our media that. Can blow up, at least they are calling one of our columns.
Does that put us on the clock to do it, Ron? I know you mentioned it's not good for it to sit around in bulk, but I don't know about a fat guy.
It's dry. It's not, it's not slurry. And that's what we have the issue when you slurried and you add water to it, then it's.
So it comes dry on the truck, they put water in it and then started it. Okay.
Slurried out. Yeah, frosted water, they haul it off. Come in, it's drying, put water to it and slurried it.
Okay, so the media that you have in these five gallon buckets is sealed, good to go.
And it's a pretty good investment too, because we've done a contest before where they come in like a van type thing. We pay somebody else to do it, so this is an investment for us.
And once we have them built, they're built.
Yep.
We don't have to do it again.
Definitely think that's wise with all the changes in technology surrounding PFAS.
And it's something that we can kind of control too with them. Especially.
And if we have.
You know.
If we have a vendor that wants to prove something to us, we're like, here.
Yeah.
Come. Put your money where your mouth is. Let's see what it can do.
Yeah.
Alright, so. So it looks like eighty three is going to be reviewed in December, January, review lockbox info three months before our contact contract.
Just, yes, but just as a quick update on the portal. We have fifty two percent of our customers signed up for our portal. We have sixteen point eight are on e-bill only. And we have eighteen point eight percent are on auto bill in terms of paying by. Auto ACH from their checking accounts. So in terms of. More marketing, I know that between Shelley, Jill and Amy, anytime customer calls for anything. They're saying, hey, you want to go on the portal, you can pay easily. You know, a lot of people have been calling recently about the fact that they didn't get their bill because US postal service is not as reliable as it used to be. And. Our immediate answer is, well, we can email your statement to you instead of using the. Post office, so. It's. We were told when we first did this that it would take about a year. To even get thirty percent, and here we are a year and we're we're at over fifty percent, so. I think we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, I also like to get an email when your bill is paid.
Yes.
And it's like, thanks for paying your bill, and you're like, you're welcome.
I didn't do anything.
Saying that for actually saying you got it, because if somebody you like you. You know, when you do the online payments or sometimes you're like, well, does it actually like, but it's like, yes, we you got, we got your bill, thank you. So I do like that.
Alright, and then. Says here on eighty five, keep commissioners updated and search for financial accounting software ongoing.
Yes, I had three. Demos. Last week. I have been searching for financial software. Basically by going through Google because New England seems to be stuck on about five softwares. And nobody has anything great to say about those five softwares. So I was like, there's got to be other stuff out there. So I've spoken to one in Seattle, one in Ohio, one in Michigan. They are all cloud based, they are all module based. They are all. Specific to municipalities. And or local governments. And. I will, as I'm doing my homework, when I start narrowing it down, I'm going to sit with Ron to go over what. I would suggest. And then kind of do a. Our point presentation on here is the three that I think would be the best. To serve our purpose. The biggest thing about all of this is to get on to the New Hampshire DRA's chart of accounts. That's kind of my. Number one goal, because in terms of like our audit. The reports that they actually sent back, I have to reconform to the account that we have in QuickBooks. And then they've got to convert it back to what they've said to the DRA.
But that's a setup thing. That's not a software limitation. That's 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 how it's been set up initially.
QuickBooks is no, if you can't have a segmented chart of accounts in QuickBooks. It is five digits dot one, one space.
Okay.
That's limitations. So.
We should not use QuickBooks. I tried to use it for my business and used it for one week and said. I'm good.
So some of the softwares that I've been looking at is Springbrook. Municipality, municipality municipal resource. Makes one called municipal technology systems, MTS. That's local. And designed by people who worked at New Hampshire DRA and said, hey, let's design some software. We have used municipal resources for some of our contracting. So they kind of know the Hampshire municipalities inside and out. One is Munis by Tyler. Tyler's very well known. Very expensive. AccuFund was on my list, but then when I started digging in and reading reviews. They weren't so great. Millsoft Utility Solutions. Software Solutions and Open Gov are some of the ones that I've been looking at so far. So going out of the realm of. ESNA and other things that have seemed to be the norm.
Local companies, so any references for it?
I'm sorry?
The local company you were talking about, I forget the name now, but.
It's. It's municipal resources created their own software.
You, you know, if they have any potential customers that could give a review to us?
Yes, and they're glowing.
Oh, well.
I've already spoken to three of them.
Sounds like they're in the lead.
The biggest problem with them right now is. They're glowing. And they're so good, they are so overwhelmed with people who want to come up.
Well, I mean, I get it. They they get, I'll fill for you. I I think that. You know, you should consider waiting. If there's no lead time to get the best thing, then maybe you. Be patient.
And be local.
I agree.
Is that the MTS that you're talking about?
Yes. I actually. Spoke to a customer. Before I spoke to them.
Oh. Great.
That was a kind of where I'm at. Like that.
Action item eighty six. Okay, well, let's skip eighty six for a minute and we'll fill this eighty seven. And salt reduction letter to be sent out October, how's that?
Kind of just. Reap, reap what we had sent out last year and.
I know the next one was employee handbook, really you.
I believe a lot of the updates have been done in the employee handbook. Amy, I believe, is taking a look at it right now, kind of give. From the employee end of it, the end of it, and then. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, see.
I'm sorry.
For some reason, I'm thinking that there's. Some missing on here.
No, we just got down to it last time we crossed off.
Right, 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 but we talked. There were some about like finding new media. Wasn't there?
That wasn't added as an action item.
What's that Amanda?
It wasn't added as an action item.
It was not, I thought we decided to do that.
No, that was, well. That was from the email chain. We are gonna do a. We talk about having a work session, or do we just wanna have engineers and.
Okay.
Iron it out and then. Present.
We got a spreadsheet along that Ron had already, but. It's a comparison thing, it's way down, kind of spreadsheet. So it's just maybe it's leaving and.
And I know I had suggested just to you, not not the board, but just to you and the chair to not do a work session, but to have staff. Actually work out such a proposal for the board, right, so, um. If you guys are working on that, I don't necessarily need an action item, right, but, uh. I think that's one of the main goals to start looking into being less dependent on individual vendors, right?
Yes, I, one of the things I wanna look into as well is if there's a, um. You get buyback program, because we're gonna, I I don't know, we're gonna have.
Feller.
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
If I hold the word, we're gonna have. Thirty-six thousand pounds of program on that, but each with, you know, seven, eight, one vessel, thirty-six thousand pounds.
Well, I mean, we could also go out to other districts, right, and even to even just to think campaign and offer it to them, maybe they use that that stuff in in some of the plants that they're operating, right? Their filtration system, so. Not that, that's my preferred. Contact, but. I mean, nothing's holding you back as the superintendent with your team, with the operations manager to reach out to. To Kenny Bunk or to Penny Doc and any of those guys that run filtration vessels and ask them, hey, do you need eighty-six thousand pounds of?
Yeah, I I have to kind of talk through the. You know, obviously, they're not gonna buy it after. We'd have to get a regen.
Sure.
Then we'd have to go somewhere.
Sure.
Which they need a place to store it or.
So that's why your job isn't boring. I I wouldn't mind seeing an action item on here, so we 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 keep here an update on this monthly, um. Like, uh, a new one, if everybody doesn't mind.
Yeah.
I would go straight to Evoque with that idea first. Because it wouldn't surprise me if they said no.
No, what I'm, I'm sorry, what I'm saying is in general, like an ongoing search for alternative PFAS media. You know, GSE media vendors.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about selling the old.
No, not specifically that, just in general. To come up with strategies, how to be less dependent on individual vendors, so we can respond to pricing fluctuations and supply chain issues and so on. Just basically to develop a concept. Of a more independent. Supply chain for PFAS filtration media.
Could you somewhat in a way tied to eighty-two where. We wanna have the column testing to be able to have, test the new, you know, potential new media.
It goes beyond that because of all the logistics with the media, storing the media, you know, um. Redirecting into another customer potential, right, or apartment that we team up with. So it's not just the column testing itself. It's really.
See, it's kind of like a process, but I don't think until we can find a media. To replace. We're kind of.
And it might be the same thing again, so if we went to a Calgon and. We might be tied, we're gonna be obviously tied to them for future change outs, or. I don't know if we're actually available. Did ever be a place that we can go, well, this time I'm waiting. Uh, Evoque's not that, so let's buy the media from Evoque, that there's, they're all a little bit different, but I think we're gonna be tied. To whomever.
I think in the upcoming years, that that will change with. Hopefully, with, I mean. More vendors, I cannot say, come on.
So at Calgon, I believe, have to get to set the same product they were using. But they prefer their own design. For the iron, the.
There will be a day when there was gonna be vendors out there that release their media to us. That they will come. When the competition on the market, because that's what every, every market is going to eventually.
I was just gonna say that, well, if I think if I'm not. Company.
Yeah.
And I've got two five hundred pound gorillas in the market, yeah, I do something to get into the market cheaply.
Yeah.
And leasing it to you, um, you know, makes you my customer.
Yeah.
And and leasing it to you gives you the flexibility to go when you wanna go, and I bet on the fact that you don't wanna go.
Right, and that would be great, and we can sell them our media and just lease it back and they'll take care of it.
I I guess in the end, what I'm looking for is that you guys continue to think about it and come up with ideas together with the engineers and the vendors, right? I don't think that the board should be the ones that are coming up with scenarios, right? We're not the specialists, we we review and approve things or deny them, right? So. And 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 I guess I would like to see an action item that we 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 get an update on that every so often, maybe every quarter or something like that.
No, and I'm fine with, you know, let's.
That's that's what I'm looking for, I wanna I wanna turn this back to you guys and say. Be creative, you know, tell us what works for you, tell us what doesn't work for you, and tell us how much it's gonna cost in comparison to. What else you coming up with, right, or what we're doing today, that's kind of the idea.
So what would you like that action item to say?
I I thought that was clear. You know, um. Develop PFAS, uh. Well, PFAS, uh, G GAC filtration medium, what's that?
Alternative vendor plan.
Yeah.
For the media.
Yeah.
Then I'll understand it.
That's filtration media, alternative vendor plan. Yep. And make that a quarterly thing?
Yeah, say quarterly.
All right, thank you.
That would be, uh, eighty-eight.
And to not. To not bog this list down, I don't add action items unless I'm told to add an action item, and I attempt. To know it as we go, as whether or not I think something you wanted to but didn't necessarily say. Um, but please feel free to shoot me an email or add to this list as you see fit, and we can always take it off if we need to.
Sounds good. And I will send you an update with a proposal about how to deal with the months. Uh, you know, the update regularity more more clear than it is right now.
Okay.
Alright, I'm done.
Alright, so we're going on to old business.
Kind of update, I guess, on. Need to change out. Seven and eight are back on time. First one we had. Originally planned in Memorial Day. We back. That's more effective. Seven and eight, we had to ditch in that, um. But that rinsed out, the manganese started. Got that rinsed out, that is now online. In all of that, I asked Evoque or Desert Tech. For certificate of destructions, I could ask. How much makeup media? We did get, it was. Six thousand seven hundred pounds of makeup media. I asked for certificate of destruction. And I noticed. Get that, noticed when you tap that up the weights, um, of it after destroyed. Then it was thirty, uh, thirty-three thousand three hundred pounds. Which wouldn't be. Sixty-seven hundred pounds of makeup, it would only be two thousand seven hundred pounds of makeup, because the original. Media in the vessel was thirty-six thousand pounds, I should have got it started with that. So. Back and forth, apparently, we received forty thousand pounds of media from. For seven and eight of that change out, we're going to. We can get four four thousand pounds of media. Needed. Already kind of had a discussion with them that. We're not paying for anything to. More than what we needed, so. Needed two thousand, you know, twenty-seven hundred pounds of media, that's what we're paying for. But I think the benefit, one of the benefits will be moving forward. I won't need makeup media next time we change that vessel out. Hope would be that, uh. But minimal conditioning as well. They request all the same information for four and five. I've not received yet, but that's. Four, five. Done. Seven, get that media in, so we're still. We're not forward, well, we got over there, we had some manganese as well, we had some arsenic as well, that's that's rinsed off. And I I just don't know what we got from medical there. Still waiting that for that information. I'm hoping that, uh. That will. A little closer than what we. Were supposed to get than being over.
Good.
Are we waiting for any more change outs?
No, no, everything's.
We're all caught up.
We're all caught up right now.
When's the next one due?
I I need to look at that.
Okay.
We just. Flapped over, so. We've probably got, uh. Six, seven months anyways before we. So like seven and eight, Memorial Day. Was kind of that, we had a clean for the for that weekend, so that's when we did the. Lead lag switch. I have to look back on the date for four and five, but that was would have been at the. When they came in and we slurried out the media, we would have made that switch then, so that was it, that was only the last month, so.
Any new business?
I actually still have some old business, a quick one. The hydrant that was requested by a resident near the power lines after the fire, where do we stand with that?
We're still working on that, what we're running into is.
Location, right?
Location, there's there's, we had it marked out, you know, this. Underground all over the place, Brian did meet with. One of the homeowners over there and said, hey, you could, you. You really like this bush?
Right.
Um, and.
Really? I I actually did see a message that that homeowner said they don't care about that bush.
Right, so it's in planning now, so now.
It is.
Yes, well.
Okay.
That's been ironed out, but that was really what was holding us up.
Yeah, and that's.
Where we're gonna put it in. So that's finally, we've worked through that.
Okay, cool. So we can put something on, is that something we install, or is that something we?
We would install.
We would install, we're not depending on a contract of any kind.
Nothing we're gonna, we would, uh. There is a contractor involved as far as the tap goes. Uh, so we would do a tap and sleeve and then run the pipe, or we could actually shut the service, shut, may now cut it, you know. And do a, insert about, uh, a T. We're gonna go with the tap and sleeve.
And that's. And that's as permanent as a as a T?
Hmm.
Okay. And, um. What budget is that coming out of?
Our, uh. There is a line item, I believe, in. There was new hydrants added to the system, a hundred and ten thousand.
So there is an account for it, okay.
And for new hydrants in the system.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, no business, sorry, any new business?
Nope. Okay, I have the superintendent's report. Um, not, I'm sorry, the the annual review of superintendent, I would like to bring the board, I think you have a copy, actually. I would like to bring the board up to speed, quick on that, um, that was actually done prior to the last meeting, but because I wasn't here. That got skipped and I didn't wanna wait any longer, I did meet with Ron and we had a. Substantial conversation, maybe two hours, three hours, it was pretty substantial. Out nice in the sun at the lake at the, well, two, wasn't right, I think, well, three hours, mixed them up, okay. Um, I really appreciate Ron's feedback and and comments and and his willingness to, you know, to, um. To listen to our feedback, what it boils down to is, um. That, um, you know, the operational, um, leadership is is exemplary. I think we all have absolute trust in in you to to lead the team in that regard. And what I also pointed out is that in in the last six, eight months, I've seen a real effort to grow. From a managerial standpoint, to be not only an operational leader, but also an an organizational leader, a business leader. That, you know, in the team and and I think a lot of that has to do with this team that you have, right? People that are stepping up to the plate, people that you maybe empower, right, also to take care of their responsibilities. It may also come a little bit from the board taking a step back and making room. Right, uh, I think that's also happening, that we're playing the ball, I think, more often back to you guys now than we have in the past, and I think that's important as well. To make room for you guys to to do your thing, right? So, um, I basically asked Ron to continue very, very hard on that path to continue that development. And, um, uh, because of an an effort to really show that he's taken ownership there, um. Uh, I I did grant the 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 merit increase, um. To 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 the extent that the budget allows for it, right? Um, I had asked specifically to see you guys know that about a couple of things. And I'm not sure are they here? Yes, so I basically asked, um. Um, to, um, you know, to to practice a little, but maybe you can get some training on some of the the Zoom and computer handling in general. Uh, just so we're well prepared for, um, you know, for public meetings when, say, for example, Jill isn't here, right? I did ask also. To maybe formalize the maintenance and operational schedule. On 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 a calendar, right, on a on a continuously maintained calendar, instead of basically having to bring up here. Either by one of us, or or you know, just remembering, hey, we need to talk about the next media change out, or about the next screen cleaning or something like that.
That will work into. What for the asset management in.
Yeah, I can totally see that.
And and actually would allow us to talk with Brian about it. It'll actually send out work orders. So I could have, I could have stuff signed to myself or to anybody. So that's gonna play right into. The asset management.
And I can totally see that, but I think prior to that, it's more, it's it's even important to do that now, right? To, it it doesn't matter if that's a planner on the wall, if that's an Excel spreadsheet, or you know. Uh, a separate outlook calendar for 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 maintenance purposes. But just basically having a, the way I worded it is here, having a maintenance operation schedule to ensure proper planning and prioritization. Of mission critical tasks proactively without board intervention. I think that's really. Something that I think we all would look forward to, to have something that you can whip here, whip up here every night, every every month in the superintendent report that says. This is our annual calendar, you know, even maybe have a printed copy here that says, you know. And I know that this is a, this is a recurring maintenance, because the dates change every year, right? Because the media expires at different timelines, and one year might be a little bit less, one year might be a little bit more, depending on how the. Contamination comes through the ground, right, and everything, so I do realize that's a that's a living document, but this. Just having this in front of us, I think would be giving a large scale of confidence that the board doesn't have to. Take on that role and thinking about the next thing that's coming up on the calendar, right? So I I think that would be a very, very helpful tool for you guys to show that you have full ownership. Of of and foresight, right, of 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 those activities, without anybody on the board having to step in there. Um, and then the other one that I really would like to see, or that we would, that I speak for the board in this regard, right, is is the employee feedback and survey. Just to make sure that we really stay on tap. With 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 the staff to 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 have a good sense of, uh, similar to what we talked about with the, um. What is it called?
Level of service.
Thank you, um, plan, right? It's just, in today's world, it is important, you know, in in today's job market, it's important to get that feedback from staff, you know, where. And and we, I keep going back to to things like, you know, Lee Manufacturing that tells you, the manager doesn't know what staff needs at times, the guy that runs the wrench every day. And assembles that engine, that that guy or gal knows what's needed, more so than anybody else. So going to to into our team and asking, what is it that makes you? So going to to into our team and asking, what is it that makes you successful, and what is, what is it that that hinders you and frustrates you? And hearing that from staff is very, very important, and I think there's no better way to do that. With with an somewhat anonymous employee survey that allows. People to speak up, not not because there's a lack of trust, but it just opens up more. Frankness, it just does in every organization, right? And over time, maybe, you know. It it becomes easier, right, but initially, it's it's just a good way to to open up. Um that feedback that maybe sometimes doesn't come as frank as it could be. So those were two things that uh that I reported back to. Uh to Ron that I think would be um. Good opportunities for growth, and I did suggest that we actually don't wait another year to meet again, so we're gonna talk again over the winter. Just to 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 give that ongoing support from my end. Any comments on your end?
I I thought it was a fair, uh fair review. I agree, yeah, a fair review, and it was uh. Achievable.
Okay. Good, any questions or comments on the, on the board?
Negative.
Nope. And that's it for me.
Ron, do you have anything else?
And um. We did uh. Going to super dead report, we we did file a leak report for damage at four and five. Someone drove. All over the lawn, tore it up. Kind of over on the building, back behind, wasn't it bad?
So they were able to drive around the whole building?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
But it's really pretty much in that front lawn area that was tore pretty bad. So we did purchase some cameras, they are up.
Um. When it comes to camera security wise, I mean, do all the wells have security cameras?
Fencing.
They got fencing.
Fencing.
This is not something maybe we should invest in. I'd be just thinking, cuz it is the water supply.
We. So we did start abroad, started looking into it a while back, and then. Fast happens and we need to get back upon it again and get something a little bit more permanent there, uh one of the thing, one of the things that was hard. I guess depending on what we go with for security cameras was like seven and eight, we, you need internet. Unless we have something that just records, which which is anonymous. Probably would make more sense. And seven and eight is a little bit different because. In order to get internet. You're gonna talk to your cable provider, well. That's Hollis. Well, Hollis needs to go through Merrimack, so there needs to be an agreement, it was just a, a whole, open up a whole can of worms to, just to get. Uh sort of cable down that line.
Is that, is Hollis, it's not uh uh Xfinity? Oh, yes.
Um. What's now it would do?
How those trail cams work?
They, that was our biggest problem camel, was the trail cans, because they, they're motion activated, so by the time it. Slammed a picture, the car would be passed.
Yeah.
Oh, they do, in.
Trail Candace?
Coming though, it was a website, it was sending it, it was self uh cellular based.
Cellular, okay.
So I was getting um. I'd get the pictures on my phone, but again, it would be, you know. Roof of the car or the, it was never in the spot.
But there is still internet service too that we could use independently, and and those fifty megabits should do it, actually, yeah, especially if it's black and white.
That's what we're kind of using right now at four and five is.
You just started back in on the. I mean, cameras are so much better now too.
So we will. Kind of. Definitely following up on that, and something a little bit more permanent on it.
Shame.
Then copper step one will be done this week uh. It was. Gonna go out today, but because of the weather, they didn't vote tomorrow. It gets up on Wednesday. That's all we have.
All righty, uh okay, so we're at the point, uh. Any questions, is there anybody online, questions from the public? Or press, I should say, too. All set, all right, so. Uh that, looks like the next meeting is. It would be October sixteenth, is that correct? So, all right, so our next meeting will be October sixteen, twenty twenty three. Uh. That's it for tonight's meeting, you know. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Do a motion closer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and I'll uh put a vote by saying I to end the meeting. Right, right, that's four zero zero, and have a wonderful evening.